I'm working on it. It's, um...
It just accumulates the early you can put together a pattern or habits?
Yeah, it's been, um...I'm working on it. I'm still doing the everything's coming at me very quickly kind of approach.
I did.
I know you did.
I told Sean that my doctor, we didn't like paying. It's different to be sworn in.
The July 23rd, 2019 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois, has called to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business would be to call up Sean Gregory and Judge Mo Madonia, who'll do the swearing in, and whoever else Sean you'd like to bring forward. And if you'd come up to the front here, up on the... Your Honor, if you want to...
Front and center. How do you feel?
I should feel great.
Just me. You deserve this honor. Here you go. All right, Mr. Gregory, it's time to administer an oath that had been a long time coming. If you would raise your right hand, put your left hand on the Bible, please. Repeat after me. I, Willie Gregory, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman of the City of Springfield, Illinois to the best of my ability.
If you'd like to say a few words, you can do so there, and then if you'd like to take pictures as well.
It's been a long ride, but, you know, it is definitely well worth it. You know, I definitely want to thank Ms. Simpson. She was great, you know, this whole time. I want to thank, of course, my lawyers, Mr. Moore Few. I struggled with that even the whole time we've been together for quite some time, and Mr. Murdoch, you know, our whole team, you know, everybody that was involved in my campaign. I truly, you know, I could go on and on and mention names, but I just appreciate everybody helping me and, you know, advising me, and, you know, I look to really, you know, bring some, something different, you know, to our city. You know, I'm just excited to get started, and I appreciate everybody for being here.
You want to back up and stand by the side of your...
Sir.
Until amen.
Wild doors. Make this official and have you get some... We want your vote to count tonight, whatever that vote may be.
Absolutely.
We want all votes to count.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you, Gary.
The clerk, if you'd please call the roll. Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Proctor. Alderwoman DeCensio.
Excuse me.
Alderman Sotjinsen. Alderwoman DeCensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a former is present. Thank you. The first item on the zoning session is docket number 2019-021 for the property located at 1806, 1810 and 1814 South 11th Street. Petitioners, Sadio Ali Alkoff, and it's my understanding this is to be held again for 30 days. Is that...someone want to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to extend the ordinance for 30 days.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-023 for the property located at 2603 Cooper Avenue, Unit 1, and 113 South Oxford Road, Unit 2. Petitioners are Matthew L. Waldorf and Brian Newquist. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence district section 155.017. Requested zoning relief for Unit 1, a variance of section 155.061. Basic yard requirements to allow the existing north property line setback of approximately 16 feet instead of the 20 feet required for the year's rear yard setbacks, 155.068. Garages or accessory structures to allow the existing detached garage to be located in front yard and side yard with a front yard setback of 11.7 feet instead of the 25 feet required, and 155.062 permitted obstructions in required yards to allow the existing garage and driveway as permitted obstruction in a required front yard setback. And for Unit 2, a variance of section 155.061, basic yard requirements to allow the existing north property line setback of approximately 16 feet instead of the 20 feet required for rear yard setbacks. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Good move, and second, to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-024 for the property located at 1331 Bates Avenue. Petitioners are David and Stacy Herman. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence district section 155.016. Requested zoning relief as amended, variance of section 155.068. Garages or accessory buildings or structures to replace an existing dilapidated garage with a new garage, structure with the north wall of the structure less than three feet, but not closer than half a foot from the northern property line. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is approved. The petition as amended. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amended petition as recommended by the planning and zoning commission.
Second.
Good move, and second, to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation as the amended petition, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-025 for the property located at proposed lots 1 through 12 Cobblestone Estates, subdivision 27th Edition. Petitioners Centennial Park Subdivision LLC. Present zoning classification is S2, community shopping and office district section 155.031. Requested zoning relief reclassification to R2, single-family and duplex residence district section 155.017. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good move, and second, to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-026 for the property located at 2621 Parcel 1 and 2623 Parcel 2 Delaware Drive. Petitioners are Charles I. Hewson and Sandra J. Hewson, owners of Parcel 1, and Christopher W. Dishar and Jana R. Dishar, owners of Parcel 2. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence district section 15.017. Requested zoning relief, variance of section 155.114. Regulations for the location of off-street parking facilities to allow accessory off-street parking for Parcel 1 as identified on Exhibit C to be located on Parcel 2. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Good move, and second, to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation for approval, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2019-027 for the property located at 612 North Fifth Street. Petitioners, Tim Mathis and Denise Bean Mathis. Present zoning classification R5B, general residence and office district section 155.021. Requested zoning relief, variance of section 155.056. Minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow the use of a duplex on a lot containing 5,664 square feet of land instead of the 6,000 square feet required. And section 155.055, minimum lot width for residences to allow the use of a duplex on a lot with a 37-foot width instead of the 50-foot minimum what required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Good move, and second, to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket passes nine voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. At this time, the Chair will recognize Treasurer Busher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of June had a beginning balance of $7,204,115. We took in total receipts of $18,855,266. We had total disbursements in the month of June of $19,090,90, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $6,969,291. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense the reading of the minutes of the July 9, 2019 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading and the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers 2017-103, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, 2019-232, 2019-275, and 2019-276 remain tabled or in committee. Is there any action on any of those? Next item on the agenda is 2019-319. An ordinance annexing certain described real properties located at 2320 East Lake Shore Drive. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-319 on final passage.
Move for passage.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the agenda number passes nine voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is number 2019-322. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a grant agreement, Chodo Number 16-01 with Growth International, Inc., for use of the city's home funds in an amount not to exceed $175,674 for rehabilitation of property located at 833 North 7th Street through the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-322 on final passage.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion?
Discussion, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman McMiniman.
Alderman Proctor isn't here today, but last week he recommended that we use some alternative funds for the city contribution. Did that get resolved?
For this particular project, there isn't any additional, so we're willing to just have this be altered, the, you know, request to 155, if that's what needs be. You know, I sent an email out that each year we get home funds in the amount of roughly $600,000, and I believe it's section 92.218 of the HUD guidelines specifies that we have to appropriate 25% funding. And so, on the budget this year, in line item, let's see, in our line item, 2,100 under the corporate fund, we did budget $150,000 for that, so we just used 20,000 of that $150,000 towards this project.
So if we amend this to 155,674, that's acceptable?
That's acceptable, and we'll just work with them to manage some of the expenses.
And is there potential for TIF money to come in?
No. No, not on this project. No.
Well, offer an amendment to revise the appropriated amount to 155,674.
And that's how much we can actually spend from our CBG money, based on the fact that this is a two-unit building and however many bedrooms it has. One has one bedroom, one has two, so that's the amount that we can fund.
Alderman Redpath?
Alderman Turner was first, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what impact will that have on the project?
Well, I suppose that they didn't really say, you know, just other than they'll make it a little more challenging for them. The total project is over $220,000, and so they're willing to work with us with whatever we need to do, so it will be a challenge.
But there's no prohibition of us spending the money for this project?
Absolutely not.
Correct?
Right. It's in the budget, it's a line item in the budget that you approved.
Okay, it's a line item in the budget that was approved.
Okay, if you'd like to come up, please.
There's no prohibition from HUD for us to use the money for the project.
Absolutely not.
So I guess I don't understand why there's an issue.
HUD actually requires us to...Val explained 25% has to be matched each year, so we're actually required to take these match funds and spend them on home projects, projects similar to this, so we need to actually use the funds that were budgeted in that line item.
Or we could lose the $600,000 each year.
Right, so I guess I would rather not, I guess I would rather not take the chance of losing $600,000 by not spending 20,000 that was already budgeted for this specific type of project. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Because we will take that 20,000 anyway and put it towards our single-family rehabs.
Exactly.
Right. Right, and we just wanted to make this a more viable project. This was important to us because it's, you know, in Venus Park, and we wanted to make sure that we got this done.
So this is, so again, this is money that's in the budget that we approved, specific for these types of projects.
Correct.
HUD has no prohibition for this type of spending.
No, no.
And if we do not move the project along as budgeted, it could be in jeopardy.
Yes.
I guess clarification, I guess, is the project, or what's the deadline for spending the $20,000?
There's no within the year.
Within the year, right.
Okay.
So we have 150,000. We haven't spent any of that yet, have we? No.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMiniman, then Alderwoman Conley.
I guess the, you know, the explanation and the counterpoint is that the budget was created prior to the mayor introducing an ordinance that allows the City Council to fund our pensions when our corporate fund achieves a certain healthy balance. So if there's other funds that we can use for this project or later projects to achieve that 20% contribution, I think we should look for those other funds, because if we don't, then we're potentially taking money away from our pensions and putting it to this project, when there may be other funds that can be used to achieve the 20% contribution, if not on this project, then on other projects. So that's the rationale. Mayor, trying to achieve your goal of contributing to the pensions, and I had the same objection when we used the corporate fund to put $20,000 towards the golf, or was it $15,000 towards the golf event. I thought, you know, that was really, we gotta make choices. Do we gonna better fund our pensions or put it to other uses? So that's the rationale. HUD actually requires us to use 25% of non-federal funds, so we wouldn't be able to find those 25% any other place besides the city's funds. That's our source of our match funds.
So you have to spend one way or the other.
Yeah, the HUD requires the city to match with 25% of non-federal funds. You understand we've got many categories of city funds. You understand that? Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you. So you were just saying, is this the first project that we are using part of our match for HUD funds?
We may have used some for our single-family rehabs. That will normally be how we use it.
But it's, we've not used much. Not significant. So we're still looking at over $100,000 that need to be used to ensure that we get our matching funds for next year. Thank you.
And if need be, what's the project deadline?
Oh, they're ready to start.
They're ready to go.
Anytime.
And we usually give them several months to a year to complete.
To complete, yes.
Any other discussion?
Just a point of information. So is there a motion and a second on the floor to amend this, or is it just a motion?
Do you want to make... There's no second at this point in time.
Is there a second on the motion to amend to the 155,000-plus amount with regards to the corporate fund dollars? Okay, fails for lack of a second.
Motion to grant the request as submitted.
Second.
Good move, and second, to grant the ordinance and the amount as presented, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, one voting present.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Donlin.
I'd like to make a motion to have an ominous vote for 2019-324 through 2019-329. They are all appointments and reappointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good move, and second, to make an ominous vote for agenda number 219-324 through 2019-329, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. 2019-324, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Jasmine L. Woolfolk to the Police Community Review Commission. 2019-325, an ordinance approving the appointment of Cynthia J. Peterman, AIA, to the Springfield Electrical Commission. 2019-326, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Marcus Lucas to the Police Community Review Commission. 2019-327, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Donna R. Walton to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. 2019-328, an ordinance approving the appointment of Peggy Dyson to the Springfield Disabilities Commission. And 2019-329, an ordinance approving Nathan R. Freitz to the Springfield Economic Development Commission. Is there a motion for approval of those?
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, to approve all of those via ominous vote. Any discussion?
Is anyone here?
Yes, is any of those that I read the names here, if you'd come forward, please, and introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it. If you'd like to state anything, or remind them what committee, that'd be great.
Good evening, my name is Nathan Freitz. I'm the new appointee to the Economic Development Commission.
And he's from School District 186. Thank you.
I'm Marcus Lucas for reappointment to the Police Review Commission.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All those in favor of the appointments on the ominous vote, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And it passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019...oh, I'm sorry. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2019-348, an ordinance approving the appointment of Nate Bottom as Director of the Office of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2019-349, an ordinance approving the appointment of Darrell Harris as Deputy Director of the Office of Public Works.
So moved.
Good move, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2019-350, an ordinance authorizing execution of an integrative penal cooperation agreement with the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for 2019 planning services and authorized payment in an amount not to exceed $182,000 from January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. December 31st, 2019.
Move, move.
Been moved, and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? A couple reminders, one is the Levitt Concert Series, uh, this Thursday at 7 o'clock on the Y Block. I know Lisa Stott's here, I don't know if you care to say anything? Nope? Well, hopefully, everybody comes out, it's gonna be a nice night. And then, uh, this weekend is the Community Unity Two-on-Two Basketball at the Gym. There's a dinner on Friday at 6:30 in practice for participating teams, and then also, the event starts 9:00 AM Saturday and carries on through Sunday. They're registering teams, are needing coaches, as well as volunteers. Anybody interested can go to letter C, letter U, two, the number two, on2, tourney.com for more information. And as a reminder, that's, uh, the benefit Compass for Kids in St. Martin de Porres. Is there any new business come before the city council? Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, I don't know if this would be considered new, old, or what, but, um, apparently, we had three firefighters injured at a vacant house, uh, today. According to the paper, the house had been vacant for many years, according to neighbors, and, uh, it kinda concerns me that, what, I guess the question is, how many vacant houses do we have out there that have been boarded up, and we have homeless people that break into them? Are we doing anything to, to stop that? Because it's, it seems like it's just asking for trouble, because if they get cold or whatever, they're gonna start a fire, and then we put our, our firefighters at, in harm's way. And, uh, I know our, we have certain rules, but do we need, the other question I have is, do we need to look at those rules and shorten the timeframe, uh, before we can start demolishing some of these, these houses?
I think the, we can get the numbers as far as boarded-up properties. I think with regards to these fires, um, that'd be more a concern in the winter, but chief can speak to the fire situation that happened recently?
So this particular house was in the county. Um, I'm not sure how long it's been abandoned. Uh, the problem is, and it's always, it's always a risk-reward. When you have a house which has no electricity, which has no gas, somebody, sort of a lightning strike, somebody's had to have been in there. And that's what our members are faced with, when they get there. They have to make that decision. Sometimes that decision is easy. At Second and Laurel, it wasn't a building that we could go into. It wasn't physically possible. Uh, this one was, they could see all the way across the, the whole house. I talked to the captain that was, uh, in there, they had good visibility, uh, they really had no reason not to search, and really, until they got to the back of the house, they didn't really even encounter any heavy fire conditions. And then, uh, the floor gave way, and he's got a guy in the basement. The good news is, uh, six minutes and 30 seconds later, we had a hole cut in the floor and was able to get that guy out. So that's because we practiced that. We have writ companies there, and so that's the company that we always see in the front yard standing there, doesn't look like they're doing anything, and luckily, 90% of the time they're not. And, uh, in this case, uh, they were invaluable, so. Abandoned houses, yeah, it's, uh, they're tough, you know, when you get, uh, especially when they become fire damaged, you get a second fire, it just, uh, you know, basically when a house is under, uh, when it's on fire, it's, it's being demolished, we all know that. And so when we get there the second time, maybe you don't have knowledge that it was on fire the first time, so we keep a DUBS list, dangerous and safe buildings. And, uh, we check that every fire we get, uh, we look it up. Ed, I don't, was this one on the DUBS list? I do not believe this one was. And, uh, I can't explain that, I don't know how that happened, but that's a list that we keep internally, so, uh...
And whereabouts was this?
This was in the, um, was it Miller and?
It was, uh, it was 1,300 block up, up West Miller, which is just, just north of Jefferson, which we think is...
Yeah.
Well, I guess my question is, is if you have a list of unsafe houses, why are we not doing something to get rid of them? Um, you know, I mean, it, it, we, I'm trying to help, help turn people from getting injured, and if they're, they're unsafe and they're not occupied, then something needs to be done. I, I, that's just my opinion.
I think it comes down to financial resources, for one, and that's, uh, why we're moving to, uh, extend the East Side TIF. You know, the, uh, Neighborhood Hope Project's been on the drawing board for, by 2008, and the reason that plan hasn't been carried out, which has a lot of vacated properties, uh, vacant lots, no dollars. So finally, we have a capital bill in place that's gonna help, hopefully leverage some of those dollars, you have to leverage with TIP dollars, but most importantly, private sector dollars to really make that happen. But with regards to unsafe structures, Darrell Harris can, uh, give a presentation at the next city council meeting and, um, you know, speak to that effect, but even a boarded-up housing, you know, it's not homeless, all homeless, let's be perfectly honest.
No.
That some of those are vacated structures started by somebody else, not within the structure.
Absolutely, and that's a, it, this is a global problem, this is not a Springfield problem, this is a global problem. Uh, my hometown, uh, had two firemen killed years ago from a, uh, from an abandoned house, so this is, uh, this is something that, you know, on, uh, on one end of the spectrum, you have Detroit that deals with this stuff five times a day, and luckily, we don't have that problem here in Springfield, but it is, it is concerning. I mean, it's, uh, just for the fact that you can't, you know, it's not always homeless, and it's not always on purpose either, those are not always intentionally set fires. I think, uh, most of them are people either trying to see or stay warm.
One thing we haven't had, I don't think ever, is a report from the Fire Department that would show all the fires and the causes of those, uh, whether it's arson-related or not, I think that'd be, uh, pretty interesting to see.
Yeah.
So if you wouldn't mind pulling that information together for the city council, I think that'd be helpful.
Yep. Well, my, my whole point to bringing this up is the fact that, that if we have vacant houses that have been sitting on the books for a long period of time, then it, I think we need to speed up the, you know, potential demolition, and if we have to find the money to do it, um, I don't know how many, I don't know how many were demolished this year. I know we gave a, quite a bit of money towards that, um, and I'm not sure how many that, that covered, but it, it's something, and, and we've, I mean, I've, I've had them in my, my ward, it, it's not ward-specific. I know some wards have more than others, but, but we've had some, um, I know one that was like five years.
Mm-hmm. Yep, well, Darrell Harris will give a report to next, next, uh, council meeting, and we can go over that, so, uh, that's important to all of us, but again, it comes down to financial resources. And, uh, when I, one important point to make is what we should be doing, and Public Works is working on categorizing the dilapidation, because what you wanna do is get in there before you have to demo it, because what we are doing is tearing down our neighborhoods. And so, you grew up in a certain house here in Springfield, uh, you know, so when you go back, you hope that neighborhood is intact, that way you preserve it, preserves property values, so as much as we can do that, that's where we need to go to, because the answer for too long's been tear 'em down. Well, if we can save them, put people to work, that's what we should be doing, because, you know, we have, uh, in other cities, uh, our size or larger, uh, having housing stock is a crucial issue with regards to what you pointed out, with regards to homelessness, because sometimes the housing stock is so scarce, it drives the price of housing up. And so that's the balancing act, but what we need to do is be cognizant of the boarded-up properties. I think Alderman Proctor, and maybe, I'm not sure, the other Alderman that were behind that initiative to speed up that process, that was put in place for the boarding, so, uh, we'll have to review that whole process, and, uh, Darrell's been at it, I think, a couple of years, so he can, uh, speak to that and add additional information, unless you wanna share any of that tonight.
Tag you.
As far as your expertise, so, but, uh, while he's coming up, Alderwoman DiCenzo?
Uh, thank you, I would just like to point out, it's not just houses, it's also businesses. I have a beautiful building that used to be the Midway Liquors on South Grand, uh, which could house 300 people. Um, or just sit there as a boarded-up eyesore, as it has for the past five, six, seven years, um, and people do make the, the front of it. Um, you know, we've had to kick out two families that be, that took the front of it and made it their home. Um, the Litchfield, I believe it was Litchfield, that came and dropped off a couple different families to take up residence at the front of the store. So, uh, and then the old dry cleaner next door was a drug-out, a grow house.
Mm-hmm, Pears cleaners.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we've gotta do something.
Before Darrell goes, I do wanna point out, just in case everybody's not aware, uh, he was treated and released, uh, he'll ultimately be all right.
Good, thank you.
It was always good to address you, but the, um, situation with the home, we actually have nine homes right now that was declared unsafe and dangerous due to the fire damage and structural integrity of those homes. Uh, that list is out now, the bidding, um, the, we received a bidding on July 25th, and those homes were the worst of the worst, and we, we could not board the home structure because of the structural integrity of those particular, um, structures. So we have took a proactive approach, uh, regarding the fire damaged homes. That home that we're talking about is not within the city, I wanna make that clear. Uh, the ones that were in the city that came through our ten sets under the NTPs, or we had, um, declared unsafe and dangerous, are on your July 25th, we're receiving bids, uh, open bidding south for all those particular properties.
Alderman Repath?
And Darrell, I appreciate that, but you, you know as well as I do that the unsafe ones are the ones that he's talking about. He, uh, he, I, we all agree with the mayor, we don't wanna tear down neighborhoods, but if they're not fixable, we need to get them down, so there's not opportunities for people to go in there and cause problems, that's, and, and you get that, 'cause you're all over it, I, I know you are. And, and especially the ones outside the city, don't we have a, a counterpart over at the county that we, we work with on those?
That's, that's the county's responsibility outside, we don't have the jurisdiction to go, uh, with those particular properties, but in the city, on average, um, in the last couple of years, we've torn down about approximately 35 to 40 homes and stuff a year.
But we do have a fire agreement with people outside the city, and if we're gonna risk, if we're gonna risk our firemen's lives, we, they're gonna need to comply with our, with our wishes.
I'll let him speak, but I believe it's some type of cooperative relationship with the fire departments, though, yes.
All right.
All right? The other homes that we're talking about, uh, the, uh, where, like the mayor had already, uh, pointed to, those particular homes are within a listing, the categories, we try to take the worst of the worst at first, then go down the list as much as money's as the other fire available to demo.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Darrell.
Any other new business? Alderman Conley?
Just real quick, uh, a couple weeks ago, I mentioned at the council meeting that we had a problem out in Ward Nine, where this individual was moving junk from the front yard to the backyard, and now from the backyard to a shipping container, and there was a question of whether or not the shipping container could be allowed to be in the driveway, and we're in the backyard, and I've spoken to Mr. Harris, as well as Mr. Zirkel briefly about coming up with an ordinance, because this has now appeared in another, another area of the city already, so we're gonna try to get something drafted to address that issue, so that people can't just have shipping containers in their backyards for days and months and years.
So my question, Alderman, is what's the difference between shipping containers and storage sheds?
That's what we're gonna, going to figure out, you know, typically what I've seen in a lot of areas of the city are those, I think it's called, they're called pods, they're actually not bad-looking, people use them when they're moving, or renovating, or doing construction work, and, uh, you know, there's, it seems reasonable to have some, uh, reasonable point of time, but this is like a rusted shipping container, like you, almost like you'd see on a, a freight train going through the city, so...
So are we, are we gonna try to break down the identifications between the two, so we can say, you can't have this and you can have this?
I'm hoping that some other city in Illinois encountered this problem, and we could, you know, borrow some ideas from other cities, but we haven't gotten there yet, Alderman, keep you posted. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Turner?
Is that this, um, similar to the, um, because actually, I see also in the city those, um, the large dumpsters that, um, the, um, refuge companies dump, and they're supposed to be like, if you're getting a new roof, or, you know, you're doing a major renovation, but I see those too that are there forever, so, um, I don't know if there's a time limit that those can be in, um, in the driveway or in the yard.
So you're gonna have your plate full, Darrell.
Poor Darrell.
No, but that's...
That's the same kind of situation.
I'll ask.
I'm sure they'll take a look at that as well.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley?
Um, I just wanted to, um, if I can, mention the Faith Coalition and Springfield Park District are having their, um, Shoes and Shoes on Saturday. I'm going to be a celebrity horseshoe pitcher, so if you come, wear a hard hat, just, full disclosure, but that's, um, that's at Lincoln Park from, um, 11 to 5, and Lincoln Park is one of my favorite parks in town, so I, I hope people will come out for that. And then also, we have our town hall meeting, um, tomorrow night, I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to talk about that at all?
Yeah, they'll be at the Boys and Girls Club for the Center for Health and Housing, I know the SJR put an article in the paper, so, uh, you can go online, look at it, but, uh, they're giving a presentation with regards to that. I think that's 6:30 to 7:30 tomorrow night. Is that correct? Any other new business? I know the Down Home Music Festival's this weekend downtown Springfield on Friday and Saturday. So does anybody wish to address the city council?
I have one sent in.
Okay.
Dave Kell.
Dave Kell?
He was for zoning.
Oh, he's for zoning, okay. Anybody else wish to address the city council? If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it. Good evening.
My name is Jermaine Jones, Springfield, Illinois, a citizen, I'm a son, I'm a father. I have a discussion about this Y Block. Why? Seriously, like, why? Why, 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 why? The community is not involved with this. There's not enough information that's going around, I had to come back from out of town and learn about this engagement, about what I've been seeing about the, about the SIU education agenda that they was gonna set for. I just don't understand why we take Southern Illinois' education and put it in Central Illinois' downtown. Don't make no sense. Education is beautiful, but Southern Illinois' educational system, Central Illinois', don't make sense. Why? Like, simply like, why? I understand, uh, Senator Maynor has a plan, but also, our children have plans, too. Some of us adults in here are not looking at that, and nor, nor are we engaging in that process. We need to understand that our children needs a school of the arts, once again, not just that one downtown. We need something that's gonna remove our children's, it's time for Springfield to align themselves with the school of the arts, right there. Innovative, green, ballet, rap, poetry, whatever, science, technology, learn about, learn about the planet, something other than another college right now. Our children are, are in a desolate state as of right now, their moral conditions are in a desolate state. I don't think we understand it. I don't think we understand it. When you're seeing officers point guns at children with shirts off, where their backs are turned, y'all don't see this. We do. We gotta stop the police from shooting our babies. Like, seriously. It's like, it's like, we need something else to get our children, once our, once District 186 are through babysitting our babies, we need some, another program to engage their mind. Every child is not an athlete. I'm tired of saying this, it's like, every child is not an athlete. Do y'all agree?
Agree.
Do we need a school of the arts in this Springfield of the norm?
Out of order.
Why not?
If you'd, uh, direct your comments to the chair, I'd appreciate it, thank you. We'd like your passion, though.
I understand, okay. The science of this is simple. You can name it Jim Langerfelder School of the Arts. We don't mind. We need a school of the arts. We need something that's gonna focus on our children and develop their mental, their orientation, uh, what we call, uh, mental disabilities. We need mental orientation, family orientation. I know everybody's not in tune with, um, Montessori. Montessori is an education to where as we can engage these young men and women of diverse squad, we could rotate it every 90 days, get a whole nother group. We got a good central area to rotate the, uh, the bus system, to get them in and get them out, and get them home safely, although we need a school of the arts that's affordable. There's too much money that is being spent on things that, I mean, like, seriously? There's too much money that is being spent on things that, I mean, like, seriously? Did y'all see that home that they was just asking for? On 833 North 7? And they asking for 157? Y'all seen some of the homes on the East Side? Like, seriously, they asking for $157,000, and our babies ain't getting nothing. That's disrespectful. It's a disgrace. A school of the arts. It's, I mean, he's a senator. He has that power to twerk, to nurture, and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna engage this conversation. But when do we take, I mean, have we done, have we failed ourselves to fall in the system and say, we can't think for our own in Central Illinois and in the capi, this is the state Capitol. This is not Southern Illinois. We cannot go in Southern Illinois and tell them we're gonna bring something from Central Illinois and stake it down there. It's not gonna happen, because their system is not set up like that. Their administration, their commission is not set up like that. Why? The Y Block needs a school of the arts is because these children need to be educated fundamentally, with the essence of due process, fundamental fairness. We talking about life, liberty, and limb, something that they have a right to, the standard of living, the quality of life. This is what we are subjected to under the GD, what's it, the GDP, whatever it's called, BDP, GDP, you know what I'm talking about? We have, we have, we have, we have that at stake where we can nurture and begin the process. We need Springfield, engage Springfield to engage a school of the arts. Go green with it. How can you fail? It's gonna do its own, it's gonna be productive on its own. But these children need something else. Our babies need something else to engage in other than sports, or thinking that one of these centers is gonna save them, or thinking that one of these mentors is gonna save them. If I look at, if you look at the mentors that's in our communities now, these are the ones that got our babies pointing guns at pregnant women, pregnant children. The psychology of this don't make sense.
Well, a couple of items. One is, John Crisp's desire or passion is to work towards that initiative. He's, you know, doing it on his own for the most part right now, so that's something we're working towards. Springfield Art Association, they've opened up a center, but we'll continue to work with School District 186. We understand where you're coming from with regards to making it affordable. I think that's the whole key concept. And Compass for Kids are doing, you know, summer programs, things of that nature, but how do you get the financial resources to move that direction? With regards to the SIU presence, it's not relocating the university. What that is geared towards is more, SIU's almost dying on the vines with regards to students. And so, what that would be is a advantageous process where a potential law school, just like the School of Medicine is here. You know, the School of Medicine, SIU School of Medicine's here, that's what the discussions were, but they're just discussions right now, so there'll be plenty of opportunity to get public feedback with regards to, as that process moves forward.
Did that make sense to you, Mayor?
As far as schools of the arts?
Did it make sense to you?
As far as what?
Our babies are dying on every side of this town in Springfield.
You were here two years ago when we had that initiative moving forward, and it's an important one to continue, so we appreciate you coming and sharing your insights, and we look forward to continuing working together.
Okay. A school of the arts.
Thank you.
Think about it. Our babies, our babies, our babies, our babies.
That's our future.
It goes from, it goes from, it goes from the home into the streets, into your home, or into someone's business. A school of the arts. We got to get the ball rolling. And Mr. Van Meter's saying that we need to engage this process. I was reading the articles, I was like, wow, what you mean, we need to engage this process a little bit and speed it up? No, we don't. Let the, let the community set some kind of refer, set some kind of referendum up and make, let's make a decision, let the people make a decision, instead of just coming from one individual and saying, this is what's needed here.
One key component you pointed out is, there's opportunities, not just downtown, but other parts of town. So, that's what we're gonna focus on as well, it's just not downtown, it's all throughout town, like the East Side of Springfield. So, we'll have those discussions and continue to work with John Crisp, and yourself, and others. So, thank you very much.
Enjoy your day.
You, too. Anybody else wish to address the City Council?
I do.
If you'd come forward and state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Lillian Madison, and I remember the days where we had black peace officers in our neighborhood on the East Side. I would like to have more black peace officers on the East Side, I think, that would keep down the violence. That's like where you knew, your mom knew the police officer, and Mama and them, they knew, everybody knew each other. I just think that that would be very, very good for Ward Two and Ward Three, where we're not having so much animosity, because we have the black police officers, which we used to call black peace officers, that kept the violence down. And they also knew, hey, I'm gonna go tell your mom, I'm gonna go talk to your mom. And that kinda put a little fear. I think that would be very influential. And also, the businesses and the streets on the East Side, I would like the roads and stuff to be repaired, because there's some sidewalks and driveways over there, we've got senior citizens, we don't want them to slip and fall. And I'd like for that to be addressed, too. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Chief, if you care, comment on that piece of it. Chief can speak to the neighborhood police officers and deployment, things of that nature, but that's a key component, is that community engagement with regards to that.
Obviously, we're still trying to work on diversifying our department. Right now, we have more African-American officers than we've had in the last 20 years. We have 21 African-American officers currently assigned to our department. Our officers are assigned based on beat selection. We let them choose, there's a set of criteria, they choose where they work. Several African-American officers choose to work on the East Side, but there's several who don't. And to force them over there, when we don't force other people, we'd be wrong. So, again, there's a selection process, they put in for it, and then we assign them based on their selection. So, again, if somebody expresses an interest, or they wanna work there, then we try to honor that. So, again, there's a selection process, but just to say, we're gonna take all of our African-American officers, say, you're all gonna work on the East Side, we'd treat, be treating them differently than treating our other officers.
That's where they need to be, where their people are.
But the other side of it is, community activities that we work on, as far as having activities within areas, so they can see the diversification. And then the roads, I know Nate Bottom, I think he spoke to you briefly, they do a prioritization by ward, and again, there's a lot of need out there, and that's where we thank Senator Maynor and the other representatives to really putting a lot of dollars towards Springfield and those initiatives, so we'll continue to work with them. And it all comes down to, what are the financial resources that we can maximize with private sector dollars, TIP dollars, as was brought up, or other resources? Because the need is great, and the financial resources unfortunately aren't as great, but we'll continue to do that. Anybody else wish to address the council? So, it sounds like we have a lot of work to do, Alderman Gregory. What do you think?
I look forward, I look forward to it, but I wanna caution everybody, you know, before, before coming to this council and getting into this, I used to think that we could, you know, snap our fingers and, you know, get things done, you know? And since I, you know, entered this realm, you know, there's an awful lot of information you gotta, you gotta, you gotta really read, you gotta really work with, you know, meet with all parties and make sure that you're making the best decision. You know, I have high confidence in our council that we're gonna overturn every stone to try to make our communities better. I can guarantee it, so everybody be patient, and let's all work together, and we're gonna get some things done, all right?
Great. Is there a motion for adjournment?
A little move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
57 minutes, man.
I'm just leaving it like it is. I'm not going through all the changes.
I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.